You know I've traveled near and far to see the shining sea. I've seen a lot of places and people that were nice to me. One place that's in my heart and this is how I feel. I'm talking about my hometown Fayetteville. She's nestled in the sand hills on a river called Cake Field. Special to so many who proudly served our country here. She was named for Lafayette and known for cotton mills. I'm talking about my hometown Fayetteville. My hometown Fayetteville. I'm so proud to be from here. It don't take long when you're away from home to find out how you feel. It's always good to come home to Fayetteville. Babe Ruth hit his first one. Heard around the world. Sherman marched for the Union and burned the arsenal. Old Market House still standing but stands for freedom's will. I'm talking about my hometown Fayetteville. My hometown Fayetteville. I'm so proud to be from here. It don't take long when you're away from home to find out how you feel. It's always good to come home to Fayetteville. My all-American city Fayetteville.
Good evening, I'd like to call the Monday, September 24th meeting to order. I'd like to welcome all those who are in the audience. We have some specific recognitions we'll do at the appropriate time, but at this time, we'll ask that we would all stand for the invocation. We ask Pastor Michael Mathis, Mission Fields Ministry, to come forth. After the prayer, we ask that you would please join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Father in Jesus' name, once again, we acknowledge your presence, your sovereignty. We thank you for your loving kindness and your mercy and your patience with us, oh Lord. We're especially grateful in this hour also, God, for how you reduced a category four hurricane down to a category one and it touched down in our state. And although, Lord, our state suffered loss of life and property, yet your mercy prevailed in the midst of the storm and we thank you. Lord, we ask now, even in this hour, God, that you would once again shine your floodlight from heaven. And Lord, you see where we stand in such great need of you, God, to be involved in the affairs of man. And Lord, we ask now that you would forgive us once again for our sin and disobedience in things, God, that we have not followed your lead and your wisdom on. As we acknowledge these things to you, Lord, we acknowledge our great appreciation for our mayor Mitch Colvin and his family. Not only him, God, all of the city council members and everyone, Lord, that contribute to helping our city to be a greater place than it already is. God, we thank you, Lord, for how you continue to keep a hedge of protection around our mayor and the council members as they go out and come in around their families, their children, continue to keep a hedge of protection around them. And we bind the forces of evil, God, that would come against this city and its leaders. Lord, we are always forever grateful for our first responders who so willingly put their lives in harm's way to protect the citizens of this city. Lord, keep your war and angels encamped around their vehicles. Lord, keep their backs safe as they turn their backs on what would be an evil to do them harm. God, continue to keep their families protected, Lord, because they are always so willing to protect so many others. And Lord, now, this night, God, as we have come, the council already has an agenda, but Lord, we ask God that you would grant them more than just manly wisdom. Give them your godly wisdom that as they execute the things on the agenda, Lord, it would be the things that would work in the best interest of everyone in this city and this state. And help us, Lord, to always strive to do these things that would bring up the moral fiber of our country and our state. In Jesus' name, amen.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Pastor, thank you for that great prayer. Would you like to tell us a little bit about your church, yourself, your ministry?
Well, I'm always proud to say that I'm a country boy. I grew up with my grandmother, never really had a father figure from the age of four. And so I'm thankful for what I learned in the country. But today, I just want to say that our ministry, Mission Field Ministry, is located on Black and Decker Road. We didn't stand idly by and not participate in trying to help the people here in Fayetteville. As I had mentioned before when I came, we went ahead and got inspected by the American Red Cross and we've pretty much been sanctioned, for lack of better words, and gotten permission to open up as a shelter during disaster. However, during Florence, when I got a call from them, it was to pretty much say be on standby in the event that we needed to use your facility to bring people. And so in finding that out, what I'd done, myself and my ministry, we aligned with Pastor Jones over at TruVine Ministries. I was there and brought some resources there for the homeless and I spent a couple of days down there, the first two days of that storm, with him. I also had people participating in Southview with the American Red Cross over there with the shelter and everything. And so I'm just thankful to be a part of the team and not be a part of the problem that's going on. And I always count it a great privilege to come before you mayor and the council. Thank you.
God bless you Pastor, thank you. Thank you, sir. Item 4.0 is the announcements and recognitions and we set aside this time to also include some hurricane updates. We have some very special folks that are here tonight that, some of the ones that we need to lift up in prayer as a result of the hurricane in their home and their property. And just before, give way to the other members of council, to staff for updates. I'd just like to personally thank publicly our staff in the city and the county that did a tremendous job with taking care of the citizens. They worked hard, they worked overnight shifts from the city manager to the chief of police to our first responders, to the fire chief, to the members of the county who ran the emergency operations, who handled the shelters, the Red Cross. PWC did an outstanding job with getting people back powered up and so there were a number of kudos to go around. So if we could at this time, just acknowledge all of them and give them a round of applause for taking care of the community. At this time, our corporate communications have put together a video that they would like to play at this time. So at this time, before we do the standard announcements, Mr. Manager, would you, a member of your staff, like to give any updates for Hurricane Florence?
It's kind of hard to watch that and not be touched once again, thinking where we were just seven days ago. And having family all throughout the state and all of my kids and grandkids having been hit by in a different way, it's a reminder of what a good community we're in and how much we all came together. Earlier today, the city manager asked if I would put together a summary to be able to share with you of the events that we had last week. This first page captures that. It's three slides and it won't take but four minutes. We were able to work in a very strong team effort across departments and put together some special ways of handling and gathering information. Unlike the way it was done in Hurricane Matthew, we were able to take people and their layers of knowledge and information and new technology and put together actually two surveys. This information has been shared before, but here it is in front of you. We identified as an additional thing beyond what FEMA rapid response is, we looked at where the problems that we have in our community, that came under the special hazard information. And you see, there were just over 1,700 features identified. Those were spots that were dangerous to the public and public's way. The second part that we had was the FEMA rapid evaluation. Now, this is the evaluation that sets in stage the opportunity for money to be available. Without doing it, communities don't have it. We were able to perform this using 60 different teams in a week. Remember, that week was abbreviated with only people who could get here. Our assistant, my assistant manager of the department drove an extra two hours on his fourth route, found a way to get here because he knew once he was here, he wouldn't be able to get home. Repeatedly, the things that people did for the city were at the expense and with the understanding of their spouse, their family and the community. When I think of how much we have accomplished, it's something that we really need to be proud of our team in the city as well as the community itself. In the FEMA classifications, there are four categories that they used. Those categories, as I've been careful to point out, are not the same ones that an insurance agent will use. They have specific categories and these are the numbers that we had. Affected is the lowest of the categories, but significant enough that from the public space, you can see the damage. And it's more than that. Then we had 300 minor and 48 major. People have been asking, how did this happen? And I think our pastor may have indicated part of that in his prayer. I think there's a lot of reasons to suggest why this storm wasn't as heavy. This isn't the time to do that, but what I can show you is the evidence from the wind damage, flood damage, and the combination of both on this slide. Where do we go with this after we've collected that information as we continue to work and coordinate with other departments and agencies? So what does this actually look like on a map? I thought you'd be interested in seeing this. So I did some snaps of screen images to show you the extent of where the damage locations are. Everything that you're seeing in front of you indicates all the different locations, every point. We have a program that we can open up and get the data of every single point, geo reference points. And I also did a blow up because I wanted you to see as an illustration, this area down here shows up as having some minor and major damage, but when you actually look at this location, it's one of Locks Creek subdivision where those houses by the insurance are going to be classified differently than what the FEMA information is. We have very specific damages. Dave Steinmetz and I went out, once we knew we had things in control, to go and check that area because water had receded. We could see water lines that were at 42 inches at different spots. It's not in a flood plain. These are significant items that we're seeing as we're working through that. We're going to continue to work with the different agencies. We have informations coming in almost hourly in terms of what are we going to be able to do and help with. We have business and industry council asking for information. We have Hazard Mitigation Grant Program, North Carolina Emergency Management, asking for information to correlate this to 100-year flood plain. And what we've been able to do with this information is it sets in place the two things that I said. It establishes the individual assistance program and the public assistance program. So individuals, whether or not they had certain insurances, become eligible if they're underinsured. People who've had losses of house, personal property, this is the information that puts Fayetteville in a spot now where FEMA will be able to assist individuals as well as the public if there would have been public damage in right of way. One additional thing that I want to point out, Cindy Blot's Department of Economic and Community Development is going to be holding a contractors fair this Thursday. And it's for those who are interested in knowing how to help and be involved in this process, to get properly qualified so that we can have local businesses, get involved in whatever those efforts are. So with that, that's a quick overview. And let me just finish on that personal note one more time. I'm standing here, but I'm really representing, I'm going to say hundreds of people who gave up their personal time, life, parked it to take care of the community. I heard stories of teams from people in the maintenance department who were out up on this building on the roof during the heaviest of the rain events, trying to make sure that they were protecting this spot. Story after story after story of what we've heard. We've given you the numbers, but it really doesn't tell the full story. I know each of you has those same pieces of information that you've heard. What we've been able to do now is because we are hearing different versions, we were able to, in a very quick way, about 10 times faster than it happened two years ago, were able to get the information of what really happened to the community. Okay?
Thank you, Mr. Newton. That's very helpful and we'll continue to do that over the course of the next several meetings. That was real helpful during Matthew to keep you informed as we received information. And to that point, I know that some debris cleanup had started today. We had this brief discussion upstairs during dinner. Even though we want to expedite that process, it was in my interest as well as some of the other council members that our local folks went back to work as quickly as possible. If you are in the business of hauling or tree or debris removal, Crowder Contractor has a link that if you would offer your services as a subcontractor, we're trying to make sure that we continue to follow the council's interests with keeping as much work as we can local and as many resources. And so this is a good source of information. Put that out there as well as the job fair. So if you're a contractor, if you know someone that is in that space, please have them participate and contact the city to participate. Anything else to add there, sir?
Don't wait in case you have anything.
Council, any questions for Mr. Newton?
Sounds good, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Councilmember Dawkins, so council, we had agreed that we would allocate a few minutes. And I'd like to remind everyone that Councilmember Art is joining us by phone, a little under the weather, but he did dial in. Councilmember Art, are you there?
Yes, I am, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Okay. So, Mr. Dawkins.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First off, I want to thank you to our citizens for being willing to help their neighbors recover from this storm. I want to thank you for your patience as we work with our utility, PWC, to get your power restored. It's going to take many weeks before we put Hurricane Florence behind us. I'm going to thank a lot of folks coming up here now. If I miss someone, I'm sorry. It's a risk when you start thanking some folks. Thank you, city manager, your staff, your entire team for your constant updates, your constant communication to our citizens. I want to thank our public service employees, those in solid waste, garbage pickup, yard waste, debris pickup. Your hard work is appreciated and you now take center stage in the cleanup and recovery. I want to thank, thanks to our Fayetteville Police Department Chief Gina Hawkins for your many days of 12 hours on and 12 hours off. I also want to thank your families while they waited for you to come home. I want to thank our fire department, our first responders, and Chief Ben Major. You had to respond to hundreds of calls for service and some ended tragically, like two of my friends and some of our other citizens. Thank you to your families for your patience. I want to thank our fire department's special operations units. Some of you could not go home for nine straight days. Some of you have not been home yet. I want to thank you and I want to thank your families for their patience during this very trying time. I want to thank the governor and Kevin Monroe, one of the governor's spokespersons, all the state employees, including the Highway Patrol, who assisted Fayetteville and the rest of the impacted area. I want to thank the National Guard and Reserve, who's one of my employees is Ashley Campy, who was deployed to New Bern, North Carolina. I want to thank you and the whole National Guard and Reserve for the efforts. General Lusk, all of those on your team. Thank you to Fort Bragg for all the offers of help. Thank you to Red Cross led by Phil Harris who's here tonight. Thank you to the County of Cumberland for the shelters and all the communications. Thank you to the FEMA personnel for getting here before the storm hit us. Thank you to Man of Church for creating a shelter in 24 hours with over 700 volunteers. Pastor Michael Fletcher and his church members walk the talk of serving others in Jesus' name. As the pastor mentioned earlier, Merritt mentioned earlier, thank you to TruVine Ministries for standing up a shelter in conjunction with the county. Thank you to all the churches, the mosques, the synagogue, and those who prayed and continue to pray for our city and its citizens. Thank you to all those who messaged me on Facebook who needed help and who were helping their friends. I thank those who shared my updates. Many of you know that I'm the city council liaison to the PWC and many of you know that I am their harshest critic. Tonight, I sing their praises. From the call center led by Bevan and Grace answering hundreds of phone calls to the PWC dispatch team making hundreds of communications to the PWC crews in the fields and on the road, thank you. Thank you, PWC linemen. Thank you, PWC bucket truck crews. All of you performed amazingly, very professional, very efficient. Thank you to Carolyn Justice Henson for your many emails, keeping me and the city leadership team informed of the progress. It matters that PWC is Fayetteville's hometown utility. To Mick Nolan and his water and wastewater team members, to John Renn and his electric team members, your efforts are appreciated and they will not be forgotten. To Mark Brown who's here tonight and his team who worked very hard to make sure our power was restored in every home in which PWC could restore the power. And to David Trago, CEO of PWC, and Wade Fowler, Chairman of the Board of the PWC Commissioners, thank you for responding to every single one of my over 50 requests and those of my fellow members on this city council. We'll have after actions meeting, as the mayor alluded to, to determine how we can improve together because we must always stay vigilant, as we know, for the citizens of Fayetteville, North Carolina. We must plan and prepare for the next storm, which we hope will not come our way for many, many years. In summary, this storm showed the citizens of Fayetteville and Cumberland County, the county commission, and the city council can work together with the police department, the fire department, the sheriff's office, all the respective stakeholders. Everybody came working together. We worked together when it mattered, when it counted. Let's build on those relationships as we serve our citizens, whether in good time or in bad time. And lastly, I want to thank my wife, Donna, for her patience because we were out of power for close to 80 hours. So thank you, honey. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Governor, sir. Thank you. All right. Councilmember Jensen, FCYC, we have a special guest joining us tonight.
Yes, we do. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Tonight, we have Ms. Kennedy Williams. She is the Fayetteville Cumberland Youth Council historian and she comes from the early college high school.
So I have a...
It should be on.
Okay. Well, hello, my name's Kennedy Williams. Like I said, I am a senior at Cumberland International Early College High School and I have some announcements regarding, coming from the Fayetteville Cumberland Youth Council. So before the hurricane, on September 10, 2018, we had a meeting for the newcomers and the old members at our facility. And before the hurricane, we made sure that all the teens and the families had to be prepared. So on behalf of Ms. Crystal, she asked me personally to come up with a challenge revolving around the hurricane that was about to come. And with that, I decided to have all the teens voluntarily clean up all their storm drains around their neighborhoods and clean up debris, any scraps of branches, grass, anything growing on it, so nothing can overflow. And with that, their neighborhoods did not flood or anything. And another challenge that I came up with, we had, if you didn't know, there's a city of Fayetteville app and with that app, they were tracking the storm. So I asked the teens if they knew that the hurricane was coming. Half of them said they knew and half of them didn't. So with that, I asked them to pull out their phones and download the app so they can be able to track the storm. And if you didn't know, if you didn't have the app, they sent out announcements like PWC, they said if you needed some type of shelter, there was water stations, places and whatnot. So I asked them to download the app and tell two or more people to have the app on hand before the hurricane hit. And within 48 hours, we had 110 people download the app and make sure their families were safe. So that was a pretty good turnout within a few hours before the hurricane. And another announcement, if you didn't know, on October 6, 2018, we're having a 5K Fun Run Glow Fest, which is basically, so it's like a race, but not technically a race. So anyone can sign up to run. It's not professional. It's just for you to come out, have fun with your friends. At 6:30, there is a pre-race party. It's going to be a Zumba party, so if you like doing that, you can do that. The race will start at 8:30 and it will end at 9:15 and there will be awards. And I hope you guys come out and sign up. That's all, Mayor.
Well done. Well, you did a great job. You had no idea how helpful that was to help us with the storm drains. So, to the public, that is a challenge. We have 11,000 storm drains in and around the city. It's hard for the city to keep them all, but we need your help. And so, the Fayetteville Youth Council has led the way, and so we expect the adults to follow suit. So, in and around your areas, if you could give us a hand with that, that'd be greatly appreciated. Ms. Jensen?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. I would like to call up Ms. Mary John Williams and Connie Goodson. I'm going to read the proclamation for PACE. Whereas PACE, Programs for All-Inclusive Care for the Elderly, addresses the needs of elderly and disabled adults age 55 or older, a population which is growing rapidly and significantly impacts the healthcare cost in the United States. And whereas, PACE is fully integrated model that provides comprehensive, highly coordinated services, allowing older adults who meet state eligibility criteria for nursing home level of care and continued living in our community. And whereas, individuals enrolled in PACE receive all Medicare, Medicaid-covered items and services as well as additional supports which promote well-being and greater independence. And whereas, PACE programs assume full financial risk for all medical care and related services, including transportation, hospitalization, and long-term care in return for capital payments for Medicare and Medicaid. And whereas, North Carolina's first PACE program opened in 2008, and there are now 11 PACE programs operating in 12 centers, serving over 2,000 participants. And whereas, supporting caregivers, supporting you in the theme PACE Month 2018, highlighting the important role that caregivers play in the PACE model for creating the support system and help maintain the health of participants enrolled in the PACE programs. Now, therefore, I, Mitch Colvin, Mayor of the City of Fayetteville, North Carolina, on behalf of the city council, do hereby honorably proclaim September 2008 as PACE Month. In witness thereof, I hereon do set my hand in the cause of the great seal city of Fayetteville on this 11th, on the 10th of September 2018. Mayor Mitch Colvin.
Thank you, ladies. Okay, thank you, Councilmember Jensen. Thank you, members of the PACE organization. Council item 5.0 is the approval of the agenda. See, Councilmember Hair, you're light?
Yes, sir. Mayor, I would like to request that we move, do an agenda item change and move 8.02 and make it 8.01. And also, I would like to request to be excused after that item change.
So, there's a motion on the floor by Councilmember Hair to approve the agenda with the following changes to interchange item 8.01 and item 8.02. Second, second by Councilmember Chris. And as well as, Mr. Attorney, do we need to handle the excuse of Mr. Hair in a separate motion? Or can we wrap it up in this?
Mayor, it should be a separate motion if you actually want to formally excuse him so that he is not counted as voting in the affirmative for anything he's not here for.
Understood, and then we'll have another council member float that. Okay, so this, this motion is to approve the agenda with the exception of those changes. And there's a second by Councilmember Chris. Any discussion on the motion? All right, Council, I look to you for votes.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we...
Uh, let me see. Councilmember Art?
Green.
Madam Clerk, that is unanimous.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we formally excuse Councilmember Hair upon the conclusion of 8.03.
Second.
As, as, sir, you have a...
Mayor, I apologize, and I wasn't clear earlier. That should be done at the time that Councilmember Hair actually wants to depart, not in anticipation of it.
Okay, so when we get down to that item, and we'll come back, we'll circle back to you for that. So, thank you. All right, item carries, item 6.0 is the consent agenda.
Motion to approve.
Second.
There's a motion by Mayor Protem, and there's a second by Chris. You said something, Council? Oh, bless you, sir. Motion by Council, Mayor Protem, second by Councilmember Wright. Any discussion on the motion? All right, Council, we look to you for action. Councilmember Art?
Green.
Madam, Madam Clerk, that's unanimous. Motion carries. Item 7.01, 2018 Annual Report of Record Review. Chief Hawkins?
Hello, councilmembers. First of all, thank you. I'm just going to, going to have the report. And the reason for the report basically is because in October opens up the new application time period. Did I mess that up? The application time period for, slideshow, for new, new record companies wanting to apply for, to be on rotation. But here with me today is not only Lieutenant of the Traffic Unit, who's over, Officer Sessions, who could not be here today, but also Chair Mr. Maxwell. He's in audience, and he'll be available just in case I can't answer a question for you. He's Chair of the Record Board. So, just real quickly, the summary of the annual report just gives... And the last year was occurred. Presently, we have 29 companies that applied in the beginning of the time period to be on rotation. 26 were approved and three were denied. The city has collected $8,500 worth of fee, worth of application fees for inspections. They had to inspect 59, 56 trucks. Throughout this year, we've had nine violations that were documented. Seven companies were suspended for failure to pay fees to the city. One company was suspended for workers' compensation issue, and another one was suspended for failure to notify of a tow that they encountered. Three of them filed an appeal. The review board actually meets quarterly. They've had so far three separate appeal hearings also. Two violations were exonerated, meaning that they were able to show justification that they were okay. And one was sustained, sustained regarding the pay of dispatch fees. And basically, the process will start next month for anyone else who wants to be in rotation. I know there was a couple of questions asked. We've discussed also making sure that within the, within the application process and now, that they clearly understand you need to clean up the road, because that's part of the application process and have the understanding. I've told you about my officers will make sure before they leave all those items. And not just brush the side of the road, but they are taken away, as well as all the other stipulations that come with being on rotation for the city.
Thank you, Chief. And did you address the concerns about the appeal process? I know there was local business that had some concerns. So, the, the appeal process is clear, and how does that work?
So, the appeal process is basically when you get notified there's an issue, you, you are, receive the letter and given the opportunity to appeal what the issues are, whether it be a denial, whether there be an issue with fees, whether you're in violation of some part of the ordinance or some part of the process. The appeal is you have to submit the request to appeal. You submit it to the city clerk, and then they schedule a meeting with the board to listen to that appeal. Sometimes they want to come, sometimes they do not want to come.
Understood. Okay, thank you. That takes care of my question. Council, any other questions for Chief Hawkins?
Right here, Mayor.
Uh, Councilmember Hair?
Thank you. And, and Chief, thank you for making that statement. Just want to kind of follow up with and reiterate about the cleanup, because that is so, so important, and it's really been, been getting escaped throughout the years. So, your monitoring process, are the officers reiterating that at the crash site?
Yes, sir.
And, but what if it's still left? Is there a follow-up? Because it really is a big issue. I see old bumpers and things like that from crash sites all over the city.
Yeah, and I, and I guess the, the deciding factor would be if there's, to share with the public, if you see something like that, call 911. Because if we can investigate it and backtrack, if there was an accident that we actually investigated or that we know occurred while we were there, we, we can identify which record was there. But oftentimes, some people may just have an accident and it not be associated with an accident. So, but definitely contact us, and we can backtrack it.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Council, any other questions for Chief Hawkins? All right. Thank you, Chief. Just before we start the public hearing, I think it's appropriate that we call Mr. Harrison, members of the American Red Cross. Are they here? Mr. Harris? So, you guys have always stepped up to the plate in tough times, and so this was no different, you and your staff. You did a marvelous job with taking care of residents of Cumberland County and of the city of Fayetteville. So, you want to introduce your team?
Thank you. I'm particularly proud of our community for coming together. I've lived here 57 years, almost as long as Mr. Dawkins, but I'm not, I'm not that old. But in the disaster business, we talk about prepare, respond, and recover. We sprint to respond with opening shelters. So, we did that, and now we'll be in a marathon to recover. So, I'm particularly proud that the Red Crosses were local, but were also national. So, we've had over 200 people come to our community. We've got Mike from Omaha, Eddie from Alabama, and Steve from California. And they're just one part of that.
Thank you.
Thank you. We hold down the fort locally, and we did that. So, in the preparedness business, my friends at Emergency Management say, "The first 72 is on you." So, we're talking about prepare water and food for 72 hours, and go to a shelter and bring all of your stuff. So, but I'm particularly proud of you for your leadership, all of you, and the city manager, the chief, chief, fire chief, because this is a great opportunity that we came together and communicated and led. And so, I think I appreciate that the most about our community. So, you should be proud. So, thank you.
And Mr. Harris, we want to give you and members of your team a coin, which is symbolic and appreciative. We could never repay you for what you've done.
Just talking about appreciation on behalf of the city.
Thanks, guys. Thanks, Red Cross.
Mr. Harris, are you related to Phil Harris, one of the early American rappers?
No, sir, but...
You know, the one that did that Elma Jones thing?
But I get that, I get that a lot.
Do you?
If he's got money, I'm related to him, but...
He's gone now. He's gone.
I'm going to put these guys to bed. They've been doing some 24-hour things and sleeping on cots, and so I'm going to go ahead and put them to bed, if that's all right with you guys. So, thank you so much.
Thank you again.
Thank you.
Mr. Manager?
Yes, sir. When we receive the chief's report, it would be appropriate for council to...
Take action?
Take action on that.
Understood. All right. So, I have a motion by Councilmember Dawkins to receive the report.
Second, sir.
Second by Councilmember Hair. Any discussion on the motion? All right, Council, I look to you for votes.
Green.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, that's unanimous. All members. Item 8.0 is the public hearing. Individuals desiring to speak at tonight's public hearing must have signed up with the city clerk by name, address, before 7:00 PM this evening. 15 minutes will be allowed for each side of the issue at the public hearing. Individual speakers will be limited to three minutes each unless by previous arrangement a single spokesperson is designated, in which case the spokesperson may use the entire 15 minutes. When the city clerk calls your name, please come to the podium. Clearly state your name and address for the record. Then you may address the city council. When the light changes from green to amber, it means you have 30 seconds remaining. At the end of your allotted time, the timer will ring. And at this time, we'll have, we'll call a member of staff, I guess, Mr. Harmon?
Already waiting on you, sir.
Good to see you, sir.
Good to see you, too. Thank you, Mayor and council. Tonight, the first case we have is P-1826F. The applicant, Mr. Torrey, and the estate of Estelle McNeil is what we're looking at. Property is currently MR5 property or mixed residential, and they have applied for going to a limited commercial zoning district. It's actually three parcels, 2101, 2103, and 2105 Murchison Road. Staff has recommended denial, and the case actually was denied, four to one, by the zoning commission. But it is coming to you tonight on appeal from the applicant.
Madam Clerk, do we have any speakers?
No, sir. No speakers for this item.
Mr. Harmon, were you completed? Oh, you hadn't started.
I've got, I've got a couple other slides.
Please proceed, sir.
And we'll...
Getting ahead of myself.
I'll wrap them up fairly quickly. You can see where the properties are located here, near the intersections of Jasper, Pennsylvania, and Murchison. One of the reasons for staff's recommendation of denial and the board's, commission's recommendation is that this area across the road is Catalyst Site 3 in the Murchison Road Plan. So, this is a focal area for redevelopment, but not this area here. And so, we're trying to keep, keep the resources from, from falling over here. We've also got quite a bit, as you know, of commercial properties through this area that are either unutilized or underutilized. So, we felt that this is not the time for these to, to turn over to commercial, if they ever do. It is, as I said, currently zoned MR5. There is some commercial around the property, but behind the property is still all residential. Little hard to see here, but this is the best map we have for the future land use plan and the Murchison Road Plan, and it does call for this area to be single-family residential. Just a couple of photos of the properties. Any of you that travel up and down Murchison Road, I'm sure are very familiar with the orange building here. In the past, we have had some code violations with that particular building. There's no active ones currently. That's why all the windows are boarded up now. And then just a few photos from the surrounding area. And again, zoning commission and staff have recommended denial for the limited commercial. The proposed zoning map amendment, we don't feel implements the policies adopted in the Land Use and Economic Development Plan of the Murchison Road Corridor, including the land use classification on the property proposed land use map. Uses permitted by the proposed change in zoning district classifications and standards applicable to those uses will not be appropriate in the immediate area of the land to be reclassified. That the proposed change is not in accord with existing or proposed plans, not only the Murchison Road Plan, but other plans for public infrastructure. There are no other factors which will substantially affect public health, safety, general welfare. And again, this site is across the street from the proposed Catalyst Site 3, which is one of the major redevelopment areas of Murchison Road and the corridor plan. If you would hold your questions of staff until after your public hearing, and then I'll be available for any questions.
Won't be long, so don't go too far away. All right, Madam Clerk, do we have any speakers?
No, sir. We have no speakers.
So, at this time, I'll open and then close the public hearing. Sir, you would have had to sign up by 7:00. Yeah, the process normally is that you sign up with the clerk by seven P M. I understand. I got you. Well, we'll try to hear from you, but you need to sign up from the clerk real quickly.
Are you in favor or opposition? Are you in favor or opposition? Okay. If you could just print your name and address there, please, sir.
Right. So as he's, he's making his way, we do have a few questions. I am on that question list, Mr. Harmon.
With the advice of our attorney, I think you'll probably need to open, reopen the public hearing to allow him.
Gotcha.
So let's do that first. He may answer some of your questions, and then if you still have questions, once you close the public hearing. I'll be available.
Go away to your point. So, Mr. Attorney, you think we need to reopen the public hearing, allow this gentleman before we close it, right?
That's correct, Mayor.
Okay. All right. So at this time, I will open the public hearing. Madam Clerk, do you call your first speaker? Right here, sir.
Okay, now we have one speaker, Mr. Thelberry Torrey.
Hello, my name is Thelbert Torrey, and I'm one of the owners of twenty-one oh one, twenty-one oh three, and twenty-one oh five Murchison Road. And we were under the impression that once the seven hundred dollar fee was paid, the application fee, that the procedure would go forward in favor of our request to have it zoned the way that we thought it, which should be zoned. After doing research, we found that most of the other properties going north of Highway two ten eighty-seven were zoned commercial, a lot of them. Some of them are still residential, but a lot of them are commercially zoned. And we thought that, and that we were probably one of the only ones that hadn't thought about going forward and getting it rezoned. And so looking at it that way, we thought it was congruent with whatever plans the zoning committee had of rezoning the property, that it would go along with what zoning commission had planned. But from what I understand is that the request has been denied. Okay? So I'm, I'm here tonight. It was mentioned to me that maybe that a limited commercial zoning could be applied for, and that's why I'm here tonight. But from what I understand is that that also has been denied. Is that right? The limited commercial application, because it was denied for just commercial. And then it came back saying that rezoning of property M R five mixed residential to limited commercial located at these properties has been recommended. So has it already been denied or?
Well, tonight, sir, yes, sir. The zoning commission denied it, but it's your right to appeal it. And so that's what you have an opportunity to do now. So the council will make an ultimate decision about it. So this is your time to make your case for it, and then we'll close the public hearing and make a decision.
Okay, so at this point, Mr. Mayor, has the property, has the decision been made?
The city council is gonna make their decision at the conclusion of this part of it. So.
Oh, okay.
The initial decision has been made, but you have, you all have appealed it up to us.
Okay.
And so we're gonna make a decision here tonight based on what you say and some questions that we ask him.
Okay, okay.
Okay?
We thought that we were going along with what the city had planned.
I understand.
Okay, but as it went along, I saw that, brought out that one part of, of the area was already zoned to be part of the redevelopment program, or so, so on and so forth. I'm not quite sure of exactly what, what it was, but we would like to actually go ahead and get, get it zoned limited commercial.
Okay. Thank you, sir. All right.
All right, thank you for your consideration.
All right. So at this time, we will close public hearing. So, Mr. Harmon, I do have some questions, and we have several council members to follow. So very familiar with this. I, my property, my business is located across from this. So over the last forever, we've seen various problems with, with some of these properties from, you know, illicit activities to, to other things, just trying to, to, to be more of a, of a positive to the community than a negative. And so I, I understand the struggles in the current situation. It's limited to residential. It's been utilized as residential, and right now it's all vacant, according to these pictures. Okay, and before it was vacant, they were problems for the community. Okay? And so my question to you is the plan that you based your denial on, when was that drafted? That was the twenty-ten plan?
No, no, that was the Murchison Road Corridor.
The two thousand seven Murchison Road Plan?
I believe, but I think it was actually adopted two thousand eight or nine.
Okay, but in two thousand seven, the City of Fayetteville Commission Land Design Project.
That's when it started.
Basil Bowman. Right. Okay, so they're about two thousand seven, two thousand eight. So it's over a decade old, right?
Yes.
Okay, so it's not current information. Would you agree with that?
Well, it's, it's still a working plan.
I understand, until you get a replacement, right? But it's ten, eleven years old.
Well, we are still using that plan. You know, we are looking at Catalyst Site One. We've done one of the other catalyst sites, some redevelopment already on it. So it's not like this is a, a plan that's on the shelf. It is still a working plan.
It's a plan, it's the, it's the most current plan we have, but it's eleven years old.
Correct.
That's where I'm getting it. And so eleven years ago, is it fair to say that we would not have anticipated that Murchison Road would be a major gateway connection between downtown and Fort Bragg? Or maybe you anticipated, but now it's a lot closer to reality.
Right. It was, that was part of the plan, because they did know at that point that Bragg Boulevard would get cut off going through post.
But now it's reality.
But it is reality now.
Right. And, and so as you know, if you know anything about this area, several new businesses and, and things are coming about that haven't been, and this is one of the new opportunities on designation. So personally, I think that our current, you know, if you continue to do what you've always done, you'll get the results you've always had, and that's a boarded up, you know, dilapidated structure. So that, that was my, my, my input into it. And so I think I do have Councilmember Waddell, Herr, and Cullerton in that order.
Thank you, Mayor Colvin. I am looking at the zoning map.
Yes, ma'am.
Am I reading this accurately, where I'm seeing that the property adjacent to the property in request is already zoned limited commercial?
Yes. The property there, half of the property to the south is limited commercial, yes.
And I have a question, actually, well, it's, it's of no consequence. So we're saying, you're, not we're, you're, you're saying that it was denied based upon the idea that what was across the street should be the area where the focus should be. And so we didn't want to divert the attention from that area?
That is part of that. But then it's also, if you look on that zoning map that you're looking at, you'll notice that there's not much that's not already commercially zoned through that whole stretch of Murchison Road. And, you know, there's a lot of that area that's either completely vacant or very underutilized. So this goes back to that same problem we have in a lot of areas of the city where we have an overabundance of commercial zoning.
So do we think that it may be that it's not utilized? I'll, I'll withhold that question. I think you've answered the question that I had. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Councilmember Waddell. Councilmember Herr?
Me, I'm gonna let everyone else speak, because I'm gonna be making a motion, too.
Okay. Come back, and you, Councilmember Cullerton?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Some of the questions I had already been answered. One remaining would be, in the zoning or the planning sessions, were there anybody who spoke for or against us?
There were not. Mr. Torrey did not come to the zoning commission meeting, but we made sure that after he missed that meeting that he knew he should be here, and we contacted him to make sure that he did appeal this. There's no reason, when, when a, when a rezoning is denied by the zoning commission, there's no real reason for someone not to appeal it. There's no extra fee or anything. There's just a very short application that they had to fill out, basically the case number and their name, and then it comes on, comes as a public hearing, the city council.
And let me ask additional question. As we're looking through this map along Murchison Road, I'm not seeing any other mixed residential except for the parcel across the street there. I think it might help us all to have just a little clarification of exactly what limited commercial would entail, as well as mixed residential five in the new U D L.
Yeah, and just first, and it kind of is just off the map here, but just north of Jasper and Pennsylvania, there's another section of the M R five on the opposite side of the road.
Mr. Harmon, can you speak into the mic? I hear that you're having problems being heard.
Is it, okay. There we go. Is that a little better? Okay, thank you. So the M R five is our mixed residential district. It is the only district in town that by right you're allowed to do multifamily in. There are a couple of other districts that you can do that with a special use permit, but that's the only one by right. And you can do, you can do multifamily or single family in an M R five district. The limited commercial, it's our in-between, we have three commercial districts. That is the in-between district. That one allows a lot of your basic retail services. It doesn't get up to some of the, the bigger, larger projects. It would be, you know, not your Walmarts, but something, you know, you're stepped down in, in resident, in retail size.
Maybe a grocery store?
Yes, possibly a grocery store, things of that nature.
Okay. And you mentioned that staff's recommending, part of the reason to deny this is because they're looking at a surplus of limited commercial, commercial, and industrial properties that are currently vacant.
Correct.
And the last stats I heard on that is that our city has roughly enough of this type of zoning to support a city of roughly one point two million. Are you familiar with that stat?
I am.
And so a city of two hundred twenty thousand already has enough zoning that would support one point two million people? That's vacant.
That's, yes. It's unused commercial.
And how much of the, do you have any idea of the surrounding properties there that are vacant or unused that are zoned currently limited commercial?
Well, you can just, I don't have a count right offhand, but you can see the ones here in this kind of pink, or darker pink color. All of those are limited commercial, and then neighborhood commercial in the lighter pink here as well.
But we don't know if those are vacant or not.
Well, we can kind of, I don't know the number, but you can kind of get a look here on the aerial photo. The property right across the street, there is one building here, but it's largely vacant. There's some vacant parcels scattered around here as well, and, and quite a bit that are those underutilized properties as well, or, or just not being used at all at the moment. They may have a small building on them, but they're just sitting vacant.
Final question. If this is denied tonight, would the property owner have the opportunity to, at a later date, come back and apply for the same zoning or a different zoning?
Oh, yes. That, it would mean that he would be, he would have to wait one year for it to come back.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Cullerton. Councilmember Dawkins?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Harmon, approximately how many cars travel on Murchison Road every day?
I don't have that figure right in front of me, but it is a, it's one of our very busy streets in town.
Very busy, and is there any anticipation that, that the number of cars would travel in Murchison Road would, would decrease?
No, because as the mayor mentioned a while ago, you know, it is now one of the gateways, one of, it is a more featured gateway than it was in the past into the downtown because of Fort Bragg's closure and because of the new alignment of the bypass and everything.
All right, I'm, I'm leaning towards supporting a, a limited commercial. And I think the mayor's point was if we, if we decide to do nothing and it stays like it is, we're just treading water at best, and at worst, it could get worse. I am all for economic development, and if they can change that property where it would become more valuable, that council would generate more property taxes for this city, which I'm very much in favor of. So thank you, Mr. Harmon.
And I'll add that if the property owners had something specific they were looking to do with the property, that would be, that would have weighed heavily on staff's recommendation as well.
Reserving the right to ask one more question. If it was zoned limited commercial, would that possibly, as I think you said earlier, Mr. Cullerton's question, that would expand possibly to even a grocery store where they might, could market this property and make it more valuable than it is today?
It could be.
Okay, very good. That's fair enough. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Dawkins. Councilmember Crisp?
Mr. Harmon, put the previous map on, please, sir. Thank you, right there. What's on the corner between Jasper Street and Campbell Street?
That's the, the.
Some business.
Yeah, well, I'm trying to think of the name of the business.
Quick Stop type business.
Yeah, it's, it's a, yeah.
Now, coming back toward the south with the darker pink, what's located there?
In the darker pink?
Yeah.
There are a couple of businesses. This is kind of a vacant area here, but this does have a business here.
Okay. And what is beside to the south side of the property in question, right there?
Right through here, there's a series, there's a parking lot here, and there's a couple of businesses. They're very small.
But they're businesses.
Kind of underutilized. Some of them.
Commercial.
Yes, some of them have tenants, some do not.
And what is it, what is that O and I blue to the north of that one right there? What is that?
Currently, that's a, actually, it's currently a, I believe it's still a residential unit. They came through a couple of years ago and got that rezoned to the O and I. They had a specific use at that time for it, but I don't think that anything has ever happened.
Has the owner expressed a specific desire of what they intend to do with that property if it is zoned limited commercial?
No, sir.
Neighborhood commercial?
No, sir.
They have not. So we have no guarantees that anything would happen to those vacant properties except being rezoned. Is that correct?
Correct.
But looking at the map there that I'm seeing now, except for the O and I in blue, everything, most of everything up and down there is commercial.
Correct.
Is that right?
Yes, you're correct.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Wright?
Yes, Mr. Harmon. I'm leaning toward approving the limited zoning for the limited commercial use zoning. And the reason being is because exactly a lot of comments that were made by previous council. But as we develop the city, Murchison Road historically has been left out of development for many years in the sense of, when you look at the development throughout the city, the downtown area, Sky Bowl Road, and other areas. And so when you have commercial already around the property in question, we look at Murchison Road as being one of the main corridors now going to downtown. And so those already existing facilities, which are residential, are boarded up. And as you've said yourself, in the past, have given us problems. And I agree with the mayor and others that if we're visionaries and looking to improve the Murchison Road corridor, why wouldn't we approve it with a limited commercial zoning if that's going to better our economical base and the future growth of that corridor? And I, I think that if we would leave it like it is, then we're not being good stewards of, of the vision that the citizens desire for the Murchison Road area. And so with all the questions. area. And so, with all the questions that's been asked and the answers that I get, I think that, I think that I'm leaning toward approving this limited commercial zoning for that reason. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. And so, now we'll hit round two. I had a question, Councilmember Waddell. Mr. Hare, you were gonna come at the end of this, and then I see Mr. Cullerton for round two.
And also with my comments.
Right, yeah. You know, we hear people come in and fight every day about not wanting commercial to creep into their residential areas.
Correct.
I can name countless examples of that. Here, we've got a residence surrounded by all commercial on a corridor that we have designated as a major gateway, and so...
What you have to look at too, though, is it is MR5, which is our heaviest residential. It's where apartments could go. And you could have around 27, 28 units put on those properties.
So, would you say that Fayetteville, North Carolina has an oversupply of apartments?
I've not done any study on apartments, so I'm not gonna touch that one.
It's got a high inventory of multifamily usages. And so, that's all of my comments at this time. Councilmember Waddell?
Thank you, Mayor Colvin. Mr. Torrey, would you mind coming up for just a moment? First, I want to make the disclaimer to you that I'm not a real estate guru, nor am I a developer, okay?
Okay.
I want to tell you that as I'm looking at this piece of property, I would be hopeful that should this be something that we deny, which is their denial, should we overturn that denial and actually give you what you're asking for, I would be hopeful that you would take that and you would look at this piece of property and understand that this area is a food desert and is in desperate need of something like a grocery store, and that you and your family, who are owners of this property, would begin working with people, maybe even people here at this city like Mr. Robert Van Gheens, who goes out and looks for business opportunities to come in where there's space, to fill that property so that we can bring the type of life to the Merkison Road corridor that we, many of us in this dais, feel is lacking and is in need of in that area. As I say that, I want to ask you, how many owners of this property are there that are in question? Are you the decision-maker or are there many of you?
There are many of us. I'd say nine.
Okay, would there be a barrier if we were to turn this over and make it what you're asking for in terms of zoning? In your opinion, would there be a barrier to you moving forward with some sort of economic opportunity on that piece of property, or is this just something that you're doing in response to what the area already has? Do you understand my question?
Yes, I understand your question. Councilor Waddell, the owners are all in agreement of having the property rezoned to limited commercial and using it for something other than what it has been used for in the past. We've looked at some of the uses of limited commercial, and they seem like ventures that we would entertain the property's uses for. But as it stands now, we're not interested in rentals anymore. So, that's why we're requesting it to be zoned limited commercial. Again, we're all in agreement, there would be, wouldn't be any problem with any of the family members standing in the way of any progress that the approval of this property results from.
Thank you, Mr. Torrey. Thank you, Mayor Colvin.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Torrey. And council, we need to just be mindful that this is a question portion for them, that we don't imply that we're spot zoning or dictating what goes in there, so we'll make sure we don't violate anything there. I was kind of giving the eyebrow raise about that. Councilmember Cullerton and then Hare?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I, I agree that we can't, as a council director, encourage, possibly we could, but direct what type of development goes in anything. We need to look at all possibilities, and that's my concern here, is that the possibilities, once this is zoned limited commercial, could be anything. It could be a strip joint, it could be a bar, it could be, you know, a cigarette. It could be anything, and with the proximity to the college, that worries me. The applicant hasn't really given us anything, although he had said that he and his partners in his property have looked at the limited commercial possibilities, and it interests them. But he didn't say what ones interest them. He just said that the grocery store didn't interest them, nor does rental, so we're not looking at possibly apartments, if that's the case, from my understanding of what's being conveyed. So, my concern in approving this is twofold. One, we have a lot of space already available for commercial development that is vacant. Two, there's vacancy of commercial space that's already zoned around this area. And three, we haven't given any clear direction other than they just want this to be limited commercial, so I'm fearful of what could possibly be put in there. So, those are just comments I'm gonna put out there, and I'll leave it at that.
Thank you, sir. And just before I go to Councilmember Hare, we just need to be mindful that everyone that stands here for a rezoning doesn't tell us what the game plan is. And I think that you can find just as many vacant residential properties on Merkison Road as you can commercial. The problem is not supply and demand, it's economics, and that's the part that I think we're trying to get to. Councilmember Hare?
Thank you, Mayor. I'm just gonna go ahead and just move forward with a motion for this property. I think we all know that this is a great, another opportunity to help to improve our quarter, and this is what we all have conversations about all the time. So, council, if I could, I would like to make a motion that we approve this map amendment for rezoning to limited commercial as requested.
And I second that motion.
It's a motion by Councilmember Hare, seconded by Councilmember Waddell. Any discussion on the motion? All right, council, we look to you to vote for the approval of... Councilmember Art?
Green.
Madam Clerk, that's eight to two. Those voting in favor of the approval. Councilmember Art by phone, Wright, Colvin, Moan, Jensen, Hare, Dawkins, and Waddell voting in opposition. Councilmember Crisp and Cullerton. Motion carries. All right, Mr. Torrey, take care, sir.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I would like to make a request to be excused.
There's a motion by Councilmember Dawkins, seconded by Councilmember Waddell for the excuse of Councilmember Hare. Any discussion on the motion? All right, council, let's take votes.
Mayor, before you vote, you need to include in the motion, if you could, that this is, that he is not being excused because of any personal or financial interest in the matters. We wouldn't want to confuse that with a conflict of interest.
Gotcha. All right. So, can you amend that motion to reflect that? Mr. Dawkins, I think you made that motion. Thank you. And this is not for financial reasons. Councilmember Hare needs to go check on, not gonna say baby girl, Ms. Hare. His wife, absolutely. All right, council, we look to you, let's do it again. Let's take you for votes for the excusal. For the remainder of the meeting. Councilmember Art?
Green.
All right. Madam Clerk, that's unanimous. Take care. Brother Hare? All right, council, item 8.01. Mr. Harmon, long time no see.
Absolutely. Good to see you again. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The next case, P-1821-F, this is a property owned by Mr. Jeffrey Bryant. Property is currently zoned SF-10. They are looking to go to an office and institutional district. Property is located at 2005 Hope Mills Road. Staff has recommended approval, and when this went before the zoning commission, there was a tie vote, two to two. There were only four members present that evening, and I believe that a lot of their trepidation from the two that voted against it were not, that the zoning was not correct, but that the applicant was not there that night. Just to give you an idea of where the property is located, it is near the intersection of Hope Mills and Ashton Road, just south of Ashton. There is a, there would be one residential property left on the corner if this does get rezoned. As you can see, to the south, there's quite a few that are already zoned in line, O and I, and then across the street, a mix of O and I, neighborhood commercial and limited commercial. Current zoning out in that area, it is single family currently, but again, we've got those O and I and the mix of other commercials across the street. Our Hope Mills, or our land use plan, which is, this is part of the 2010 plan, but in 2008, I believe it was, we actually did an update for the Hope Mills corridor and incorporated it into the 2010 plan. And so, what you see here reflects that. And so, with that plan, it showed not only your properties right along Hope Mills Road, but the ones, even a property behind those, eventually becoming some type of office and institutional uses. This is the property as it sits currently. As you can see to the north, this is that, what would be the remaining residential property. Unless you get very close, or right at the driveway, you can't even see into this property all the way around it. Just to the south, there's a line again of other office and institutional uses, offices, and then straight across the street, we have the same thing. Zoning commission again heard this on the 10th of July. There were no speakers in favor or in opposition. Motion was made for approval, but the vote was two to two. Staff does recommend approval because the proposed zoning map amendment implements policies of the adopted Hope Mills corridor plan, including the land use classification. The use is permitted by the proposed change in district classification and standards. Applicable to those uses will be appropriate in that immediate area. The proposed change is in accordance with existing and proposed plans for school streets, water, sewers, other public amenities, and we saw no other factors that will substantially affect the public health, safety, welfare of this particular property. That concludes our staff presentation. If you would hold your questions till after the public hearing, we'd appreciate it.
Madam Clerk, are there any speakers?
No, we have no speakers for this item.
So, at that, we will open and close the public hearing. And Councilmember Crisp? Turn your mic on.
If I can just interject really quickly, I believe, just like in the last case, that the owner, I think he just raised his hand. He did not sign up, but he is here this evening. He's in the back on the, on this side.
Well, at this point, I have the floor. He gave it to me. Mr. Mayor, I think, consistent with what we've been doing on council for the last 12 years, is along these thoroughfare corridors where we have gone too deep. I don't mean T-O-O deep, I mean T-W-O deep in terms of O and I, neighborhood, limited commercial, and that. I believe that this request is consistent with what you see on the screen at present. Single-family dwellings are not faring well along this stretch of Hope Mills Road. However, O and I and limited commercial, neighborhood commercial, coming all the way from Rayford Road to Cumberland Road, the preponderance of things along Hope Mills Road are businesses. And I just think that this is consistent with what has happened in that corridor and what is happening in that corridor. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Sounds familiar. So, sir, we will make sure we hear from you. If you can come and give your information to the clerk, I will reopen public hearing. Mr. Harmon, do you have any, for your next item, do you see anyone here that you think is gonna speak?
I'm holding them in reserve, okay?
Mayor, I do have one speaker for the next item.
Okay. That is properly signed up.
Yeah, I knew that he had signed up.
All right, no big deal. All right, sir, we will open up the public hearing. Give the floor to you.
Mayor, our speaker is Mr. Jeffrey Bryant.
How y'all doing this evening? I just applied because everything else on my street was limited, not limited to commercial, but O-I, I'm sorry. Never spoke to the city council, so just trying to keep in line with the city's plan of the O-I and the limited commercial on Hope Mills Road. I really don't have any intention on doing anything with it. It's actually a rental right now. What I wanted to do was maybe an office building. I run a business myself. I'm a general contractor for North Carolina. I just haven't moved my business to that office. That was my intentions later on, so that's where I'm at with the property. I have remodeled the property, improved it to try to make my property look just as good as every other property on Hope Mills Road or better. So, I'm just trying to do what I felt like was the plan for the city of Fayetteville.
Thank you, sir. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
All right, Madam Clerk, is that the only speaker?
Yes, sir.
All right. With that, we will close the public hearing. Councilmember Crisp, I see your light. Okay, Councilmember Dawkins?
Mr. Mayor, I wanted to echo what Councilmember Sergeant Major Crisp had said, and a very wise man told me that, that son, you rezon property, you don't rezon people. And just because he's talking about an office or whatever, that's fine, but this makes sense to rezone at O and I. But I will defer to Councilmember Crisp if he wants to make the motion.
Councilmember Wright has a question before your motion, Mr. Crisp.
I just want to make a comment. It's a very familiar conversation based on the last vote. It seems like it's lined up to the same situation with the same arguments, and basically that's what we're working with. And so, just like I spoke on behalf of that particular vote, I speak the same thing for this particular vote because we're looking at advancements and increasing, you know, small businesses on the corridors that we want to grow. And so, of course, we don't know, he doesn't know what he's gonna put there at this point, but what he does know, that he's trying to line up with the U D O and the Coles in Fayetteville going forward on that corridor. And so, to me, it's the same argument.
Thank you, Councilmember Wright. Councilmember Cullerton?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is O and I, so office and, is it, what's the I stand for?
Institution.
Institution. So, the businesses would be different than what they would put in a limited commercial. So, I just want to make that difference if anybody's looking at. I appreciate the consents, though, that we're looking at development here and stimulating the economic activity, but there is some difference in the O and I and the L C designation. That's all I had to say.
Thank you. I think the point was consistency. So, everything around it is what he's trying to comply with. Councilmember Crisp, did you have a motion, sir?
There's a motion in order, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
And I moved for the rezoning of the property from single-family 10, single-family residential to O and I office and institutional zoning located at 2005 Hope Mills Road, near the intersection of Hope Mills and Ashton Streets, containing .24 acres and being the property of Mr. Jeffrey Bryant.
Thank you. There's a motion by Councilmember Crisp, seconded by Councilmember Dawkins. Any discussion on the motion? All right, council, I look to you for votes. Councilmember Art?
Green.
Madam Clerk, that's unanimous by those present. Mr. Hare being excused. Motion carries. Mr. Harmon, item 8.03?
Thank you again, Mr. Mayor. Thank you again, Mr. Mayor. The, uh, next case we have before you is a special use permit application. So, we will need any speakers to come, uh, to the clerk and be sworn in before we begin.
May we just have one speaker, Mr. Greg Spears? Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give is the truth, so help you God? Thank you, sir.
Thank you again, Mr. Mayor. Uh, the applicant in this case is, uh, Greg Spears. The owner of the particular property is BT Storage, uh, LLC. Uh, they are seeking a special use permit for a recycling center. Uh, property address is two sixty Toler Street, and both staff and zoning commission have recommended approval. Um, this gives you an idea of the, uh, property as it stands right now. Uh, as you can see, uh, these buildings here that, uh, were at one time, uh, part of an industrial, uh, area here, they are very dilapidated. Uh, there's no roofs on them anymore. Uh, one doesn't have, uh, most of them have their sides. This one only has part of the side left. Uh, actually, this building here is no longer in that good a shape. It's, uh, about to fall down. Uh, the two white buildings appear to be in, in pretty good shape. Uh, another thing to note with this particular property, uh, an u, an unusual feature is that you've got three railroad tracks, uh, basically surrounding the property. So, three sides of this property have railroad tracks on them. Uh, and you actually have another railroad track, uh, that comes here and spurs off to the north. The railroad, uh, plays a part of what, uh, the owners of this property are looking to do. Again, this is a recycling business, and what they recycle is construction, uh, debris. Uh, your drywall, your, your boards, your concrete, things of that nature. Uh, they would be trucked into this site, separated out, um, and then loaded onto rail cars and taken elsewhere. Um, so it's, uh, there won't be any hazardous materials, things of that nature here at this site. So, it's a, a fairly, uh, low-key type of recycling, uh, that they'll be doing. Um, also, if you look at this particular property, it is already zoned for heavy industrial. Uh, and that's what our plans call for, for that area. And, uh, this is a, uh, some of the uses that could go there as permitted uses without coming to are probably, or are a lot more noxious, uh, to the property and the surrounding area than what this will be. Again, um, this is our zoning map. You can see a large area here that is, uh, already zoned for industrial use. Uh, there is a small area here to the north that is zoned MR five residential. There are no pro, uh, no houses here. This is completely undeveloped. Um, again, this is not a road. This is a railroad corridor here. This is a railroad corridor here, all the way down. And then there's another railroad corridor over here. So, again, the property is pretty much surrounded, except for this small area here to the south. Um, there are some residential properties here. You'll see them in a moment on the next map. Well, the next map. And you can see a couple right down here to the bottom, uh, along, uh, Toler actually changes names three times. Uh, it's Toler Street up to somewhere in here, then it becomes Barnes, and then it becomes another street before it, uh, eventually gets to Winslow. I'm not even sure if it's a mile long, the whole strip, but it's got three different names. Um, so, again, um, one of the issues with the special use permit is, um, it does have a requirement of being, that the use be two hundred and fifty feet away from any residential, uh, districts. Uh, they would have to have a reduction in that two hundred and fifty feet. Um, from this house, uh, from this, uh, building, this is the closest building to a residence. From that building to this residence here is about a hundred and forty feet. But other than that, again, uh, when you're cut, the, all of their trucks will come here on Toler. They'll come in this way. Uh, they won't be coming out. It'll basically be back and forth this way and then unloading, uh, or loading the train to take things away as well. Um, staff has recommended, uh, and, and they, uh, accepted the condition that, uh, if they have any outdoor storage on the property, that all be done in this northern section of the property. So, it's as far away from any residential housing as possible. And again, just a couple of photos of the property. Again, the, uh, the white buildings, you can see the roofs for a while ago. They're, they appear to be in fairly good order, but, uh, the rest of the site, uh, i- is, is in decay. And, uh, that is another, uh, that was another factor staff looked at with this, that, uh, this is an opportunity to help clean up this site as well. Um, as you're coming into the site on Toler, uh, it's mainly auto garages, um, the whole way. There are no residences, uh, on Toler, uh, till after you, uh, make the turn and after you've passed the entrance to this particular property. These are a couple of, uh, houses, uh, there to the south. And then just a little, uh, where a house used to be, uh, here to the west of the property. Um, again, it's would have to have, uh, a reduction in that two hundred and fifty-foot, uh, setback from residential districts. There are no schools or childcare centers within that, uh, in that area. Um, this does, uh, what they're looking to do does, uh, fit in with the Massey Hill Community Redevelopment Plan, which actually calls for eventually the consolidation of all of those residential, uh, properties because there's only a small cluster of them left. Uh, and they're basically surrounded by industrial at this point. But a consolidation of those and making the whole area into a commercial, uh, from basically this property over to the, uh, Martin Luther King Junior Expressway. Uh, zoning and staff, again, recommend approval. And we both, uh, and along with the owner, uh, recommend that should there be any outside storage, that it be in that northern portion so that it is away from, uh, as far away from the residence as possible. Um, if you have any questions, the staff, if you would hold those till after your public hearing, we'd appreciate it.
Thank you. Madam Clerk?
May we just have one speaker, Mr. Greg Spears?
So, Mr. Spears, you can come forward. And with that, I will, uh, open the public hearing.
Good evening. I'm Greg Spears, twenty-eight, twenty-nine Prior Creek Place in Fayetteville. I'm a full-time commercial real estate broker with Grant Murray Commercial Real Estate. And, uh, Craig did a wonderful job on explaining everything. I'm just here to answer questions. It's a real positive. There's no garbage, no hazardous material. It's just demo stuff that right now the city can use, um, some help. So, uh, he'll be accepting demo material just like our landfill does, except our landfill is burying a lot of stuff that this gentleman can process and turn into energy down in Lummerton at a plant. So, where we're burying potential energy waste. Right now, at, at our landfill, he, uh, he converts it to energy.
Okay.
Primarily wood.
Uh, Council, you have any questions for Mr. Spears? Uh, Councilman Dawkins?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, since it is a special use permit, Mr. Spears, and you say you are going, uh, to create a recycling center, approximately how much, you know, are you investing in this, um, property? You don't have to be exact, but I'm.
My client, uh, the seller, uh, will be closing hopefully as soon as we can get this special use. But, uh, I'm just the broker involved. I'm representing both sides. The buyer, uh, he'll probably minimum five hundred thousand. All this, um, those walls and such will be all cleaned up and all the existing debris will be hauled off. Uh, he'll be putting a roof on that facility where he sorts some of the building materials. But, uh, it'll all be improved all the way around, uh, inside the railroad track area where he can load cars, uh, before, uh, it goes to Lummerton.
Very good. I, I was just interested in, in the investment because it's specific to the recycling center, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Probably up to fifty people.
Okay.
Oh, so new jobs, too?
Yeah, a lot of new jobs.
Thank you. Thank you. There, Councilmember Dawkins. Councilmember Wright?
Yeah, that was my question. Um, one of my questions about how many jobs would it create? Um, so that's, that's good, too. My next question would be, um, you have existing buildings around, and I think the, the presenter said that there were already existing buildings. Um, my question would be, what's in the, what kind of operation is in those two buildings, um, beside that particular facility that you're going to, um, improve? Is that a part of, um, the purchase process, uh, or a part of the properties that are going to be purchased?
In the hatched area, the two existing buildings?
Yeah, the ones that's already, it's got covered. Look like they're fairly new buildings.
Yeah, on the property that we're talking about, yeah. Yeah, uh, one will be like a maintenance garage as far as, uh, equipment maintenance and such. And then, uh, other ones, uh, the one closest to Toler, uh, metals and such, it have a little bit more value. He'll separate and keep those maybe locked up inside, copper and different metal.
Okay, so, so absolutely no chemicals or any liquids or anything like that?
No garbage, no chemicals.
Okay. So, basically, you're going to clean that area, put a shelter, uh, a roof on the top of it, and you go into work?
Yes, sir.
Pretty much so. Okay, thank you.
All right. Any other questions for Mr. Spears? All right. Uh, Mr. Dawkins, I see your light, sir. Let me, let me clear the board. Is that your light?
Yes, sir. I'd like to make a motion that pleases the council.
Uh, let me close the public hearing. Uh, this time we'll close the public hearing.
Sergeant Major, you didn't let me make that motion for my area on Hope Mills Road.
You're playing nice, but, uh, right now, Mr. Dawkins has the floor. Councilmember Crisp?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I moved to approve the special use permit to allow a recycling center to be located on the property as presented by the staff based on the standards of the city development code and the evidence presented during this hearing. And that the application is consistent with applicable plans because the city's existing Massey Hill Community Redevelopment Plan caused this area to be used for industrial purposes, that the uses surrounding this property are all compatible with the proposed special use permit. The proposed special use permit is reasonable in the public interest because a special use permit does fit with the character of the development in this area. Uh, if approved, the special use permit shall become effective ten days after its approval by the city council, which is October fourth, two thousand eighteen. The special use permit shall expire one year from its effective date. If a building permit is not issued when that, within that time for a motion to approve, all eight findings of fact below must be met. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Uh, is there a second on that motion?
I'll second.
Seconded by Councilmember Cullington. Uh, any discussion on the motion? All right, Council, I look to you for votes. Uh, Councilman Art? Councilman Art? Okay. All right. Madam Clerk, that's unanimous. That motion carries by those present, nine to zero. Thank you, sir.
Thank y'all so much.
Uh, Council, I look to you for motion to adjourn.